I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, on rule call, Mr. Eyre.
Here.
Mr. Bartlett.
Here.
Mr. Brown Knight.
Here.
Dr. Lewis.
Here.
Here comes Ed.
Here comes Ed.
Mrs. Rankin.
Here.
And Mr. York.
Here.
All right. All right, you will have noticed on the agenda that we have a little special presentation here tonight. Rachel Hayes is being recommended to be promoted to the rank of sergeant. Chief, do you want to make commentary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's my honor to recommend Rachel Hayes to be promoted to the position of police sergeant. Rachel's been with us now for two years. She came to us, you'll probably remember, from Colrain Police Department where she served for about six years. She's done a phenomenal job here and it's just a great asset to the village. So, my recommendation to you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council, that Rachel be voted, to be promoted to the rank of sergeant this evening.
All right, could I have a motion then to promote?
Salute.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Eyre.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mr. Brown Knight.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye, aye.
Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
All right. Sounds to me like you've been duly promoted.
Yay.
All right.
Well done.
Read the short one. Fourth score.
Repeat after me, please. I, Rachel Hayes.
I, Rachel Hayes.
Do hereby swear to uphold the Constitution.
Do hereby swear to uphold the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Ohio.
The ordinances of the village of Marymount.
The ordinances of the village of Marymount.
And to perform the duties of police sergeant to the best of my ability.
And to perform the duties of police sergeant to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Very good.
Excellent. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you for your service.
You guys might have rehearsed this.
I love it. Tucked up your head.
Then Rachel, one more time.
Sure.
Okay, I'm just typical to promotion. It says, presented to Rachel C. Hayes, hereby promoted to the rank of sergeant. The Marymount Police Department is charged with the duties, responsibilities, and authority incumbent with this rank. This promotion is officially recorded and effective on September 25th, 2023. Congratulations.
Plenty of ears.
Good?
All right.
Good? All right.
Yay. Well done.
Also, real quick.
In the room, please.
Real quick, Emily Howell is in the back there. She will be you guys' next council meeting. She will be our new officer. She's going to come to us from Redding Police Department, so.
Excellent.
You'll see Emily next. Think the ladies, the ladies are taking over here.
That's a good thing.
That's a good thing. That's right.
Who's the guy from Fairfax?
Whip us into shape.
Whip us into shape, right.
All right.
The guy from Fairfax. What's his name? Just what happened in 1990.
Apparently the groom side is still there.
Everything's going to go down the whole.
All right, we have a couple of items. We tabled the minutes from the August the 28th meeting. I need a motion and a second to take that off the table and then to vote on those minutes.
I'd like to move to take off the table, those minutes off the table.
Mr. Eyre.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett. Brown Knight.
Aye.
Aye. Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
Aye. All right, then I need a motion and a second to accept, no, we're talking about the August the 28th meeting now.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Eyre.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mr. Brown Knight.
Is that the one I missed?
No, you were there, yeah.
Oh, wait.
She arrived at 6:40, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Aye.
All right. Dr. Lewis. Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
You sure? All right, a motion in the number 11 minutes.
There we go.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Eyre.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mr. Brown Knight.
Abstain.
Doc, that's right, you were not at that meeting. Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mrs. Rankin.
Abstain.
Mr. York.
Aye.
All right, we'll accept those minutes. All right, in communications tonight, communications are a little bit light tonight. I can see that Rod is not with us. Any questions or any concerns regarding Mr. Holloway's report? If you do, you can call to inquire. He's more than a pleasant fellow to answer all the questions.
He is quite a pleasant fellow.
He really is. All right, the interim fiscal officers' report, monthly report. Kelly, would you like to give us commentary?
Well, I wanted to, I had made a comment in, when I emailed these to everybody, that that $75,000, I just want to point out, was a timing issue, where the money came out of our STAR account and it went into our PNC account the next day. So that's why you see that $75,000 discrepancy at the end of August. And also, the property tax revenue that we typically get in August will be, was received on September 18th. So, that'll show up on the September reports.
Why was there delay?
I don't know. You know, you get a new auditor.
Yeah.
I have no idea.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the reports? No?
Actually, a question. Do you guys, I mean, I think the cash flow refund is helpful. And I love the bank reconciliation you do. Does everyone else find the other ones as helpful? I don't find them as helpful. I don't know if there's a way to.
Yeah, I mean, if you think there's some information you'd rather have and we, and something you don't necessarily feel is beneficial.
Because like the.
Just let me know.
Yeah, the cash flow detail by fund is the one, I, you know, I always ask for that one.
Right.
These, these two, the revenue status and appropriation status, I don't honestly look at that. And if it saves you time, but I don't, it's just me. I don't want to check and make sure.
Well, if anybody else feels the same way, we don't have to print them. But.
But I would just do the cash flow fund.
If there's other stuff that you might be looking for that you're not getting, just let me know and I'll see what we can do.
So, what does everyone else think?
Maybe we don't need it every meeting, like you said.
No, well, this is once a month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What I would say is, early, maybe.
Yeah, well, again.
Where the appropriation status, just to keep my eyes on it.
Sure.
May be a reminder, look at it.
Because what I, what I would, again, what I'm proposing instead of this, there's a report called the Cash Flow Fund. You can do the high level or the detail.
All right.
I always ask for the detail.
Yes.
But, you know, because it shows by month, by fund, what's going on from a revenue and expense standpoint. And I find that more helpful than this one that's sort of, I don't know, vague.
Well, you know, what, how about this? You guys look through it and, you know, shoot me, you all, call me, I don't, whatever you prefer. We'll tweak whatever we need to tweak.
Yep.
That includes you, Bill.
Okay. Glad you thought of me.
You're welcome.
All right, no other questions regarding, then, Rob?
I guess I would say from my viewpoint, that's an important distinction that you drew, Rob, and I would like to just take some time to look at it.
Yeah, have you seen the report? It's the Cash Flow Fund detail, because we don't, it's not a regular report. It's sort of, so.
I'll send it to you, you can look at it.
Definitely quarterly, if not monthly.
Yeah. Well, Kelly's been very helpful for me because I asked for it monthly, just, but I didn't want to burden you guys with it. But I just wondered these other reports, if you guys find them helpful or not, so.
We're married.
That's all.
Okay, that's good. That's good. All right, moving on. Permission to address council. Looks like we have a few people with us here tonight. Do we have a, someone that would like to start off? Sid, please. Sure.
I have a letter here. You want a copy?
Yes, please. Thank you very much.
And Sid, could you please start by stating your name and your address?
My name's Sid Sabo. Live at 3, where do I live? 3857 Indianview. This is addressed to Mayor Brown, the village council, and interested parties. I would like to address the impending destruction of the Trolley Line Park at the request of the Crown. This is not by choice of the residents of this neighborhood. We want our park preserved. We want council to represent the wishes of the neighborhood and deny this request. Since the start of this process, we've been treated to many options by the Crown group through the Kleiningers group. It has been repeatedly pointed out to them that Hiawatha, Rembold, and the sidewalk along Rembold provide more than adequate room for pedestrian and bicycle traffic. There is no need to destroy our park for additional roadway requested by the Crown, just improve what we have. There is enough concrete and blacktop in our neighborhood. Since some members of the council may not be familiar with the Trolley Line Park, nor live close to this, our neighborhood, we hope that council is not indifferent to our request. The plain truth is that you, the council, will not have to live with your decision. We will. We will have to look at a blacktop road where our park used to be. Children will no longer be, have a place to enjoy a pickup game of baseball, football, or soccer. Kids and adults will not be able to play fetch with their dogs. A 12-foot road through this green space will render it useless for these and other activities. Activities that are part of the fabric, fabric of our neighborhood. What would be viable, low-cost, and responsible alternative? Have bicycles share the road as they do now. Repair the Rembold sidewalk so it is not a gutter for rainwater. Install a four-foot sidewalk abutting, abutting Hiawatha for pedestrians. Our aim is not to deny access to users of the bike trail, but to let that, let it blend in and flow through our neighborhood responsibly. It is interesting that this issue comes up at a time when council is trying to raise funds to improve Dogwood Park. One park on the south side of the. One park on the south side of the Pike gets first-class treatment, and the only recreational park on the north side is considered not worthy of saving. The residents of this neighborhood feel that Trolley Line Park is worth saving. Do not sacrifice our park to the agenda of developers. Let me remind council that the conclusion of the UC Economics analysis in the feasibility, feasibility study states, UC Economics contends that the vast majority of pedestrian trips on the pathway will be residents using the pathway as replacement for their existing walking trip, as opposed to generating new walking trips. This does not warrant spending a couple hundred thousand dollars of our tax money. Please do not sacrifice our recreational park, easily accessible to us, to appease the interest of those who don't live here and only see Trolley Line Park as an available piece of ground that they want to cover with asphalt. Thank you.
Sid, can I ask, are there others, members of the neighborhood of your community that have signed the letter?
I have submitted a, uh.
You did?
A letter to you with up to fifty signatures.
But I mean, would they also be signatories on that particular letter?
I was a signatory on this.
Okay.
It was a, there were a couple of us that looked, looked over this, but I'm going to sign it.
Sure. I understand. I understand.
It's kind of hard to go around and get fifty signatures on a letter in a short period of time.
Sure. Sure. Um, and.
But I will encourage others in our neighborhood to come and address you as they see fit.
Uh, council's always open. We're always open and ready to listen. Let me make just one comment, though, one potential correction there. As it stands right now, and maybe Mr. Ayer can correct me on this if I'm about to misspeak, but I do not believe that there is any Marymont tax dollars being spent on that bike path. It will be funded primarily with the.
Multi-use path, too. It's multi-use path.
The multi, pardon, the multi-use path. It's primarily funded by an ODNR grant, and then, of course, there is a matching section of that grant, I think it's twenty-five percent. And the bulk of that will be made up by, some by the Crown, yes, and other by private donation. I mean, that is my understanding as to how this will be financed.
Well, it's primarily funded by my and your tax dollars.
In a, in a broader sense, I suppose.
In a broader sense, and I understood that we would be, Marymont would be footing a share of this. Maybe I'm wrong.
That, there, there's no Marymont's share in this section. It's fully funded.
Well.
What about the long-term care, the longevity of it?
It's factored, it's factored in. Uh, I mean, the, the long-term care of a, of an asphalt path is very reasonable long-term cost. I mean, it's, it's, um, so, um, I mean, that, but it's certainly the case that it would become a village asset that requires, you know, repaving fifteen years from now, or whatever the case may be.
Snow removal?
Snow removal, if you choose to. Um, Sid, um, there, I, I wrote down a lot of your points, and I'm very, and I'm happy to read the letter, and I'm happy to talk with residents, too. There are, I believe there are means to address nearly all of your points here with, and there is not a final alignment done, and there are some, and, um, it's, it's not accurate to say that we're, you know, we're covering the park with asphalt. It's not accurate to say there won't be room for soccer games and football games. It's not accurate to state that it's going to be rendered useless. It's not accurate that it would only be used by residents. I, I know you cited, accurately cited a piece of the UC Economics study, but there's a bigger picture to it. So there are a lot of aspects to this that, you know, I'm looking forward to talking to residents in our neighborhood about all the, about all these various points. And, and the, also the option of going down the street. And the pluses and minuses to that, that you pointed out. So I'm looking forward to that, and thank you for coming tonight.
Can I just ask a question for clarification? So when you say the Trolley Line Park, do you mean both parts? I guess it would be east and west of West, I mean, Miami? Or do you just mean primarily the section that's Rembold, Hiawatha?
We're talking about the section from Rembold to Hiawatha.
To the library.
Basically Miami.
Uh-huh.
To the high school.
Okay. Thank you. I just, I just, you know, both of those are considered trolley line. I mean, I know that essential.
The sign is on.
Yeah.
Is the other one considered General Short Park?
Oh, yeah, that's right. Okay. I just, I just want a clarification on that, so I was thinking about it correctly.
The trolley turnaround park is a different consideration.
All right, I just want to make sure I was thinking about it right. And had the whole picture in my mind.
I'm just trying to call it to your attention.
I appreciate that.
All right.
Thanks, Sid.
I was understanding exactly what you were saying. So thank you.
Jennifer? Or, I'm.
No, no, that's a nasty.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Dang. Can't keep me down.
No, no pressure.
Why are you picking at her?
No. No, I'm hap, I'm actually, I'm happy to speak after Mr. Sabo because. Hello. I.
Please state your name and address.
I'm Jennifer Daggerberg, and my address is three eight five five Oak Street. Um, I'm very concerned about what we're doing to the parks here in the village. We have lovely parks. We're so fortunate with the size of our village to have so much green space and so much family space available. And where I am totally for progress, and I know that some of these parks are deeply in need of renovation. One of them that was, has not been mentioned at all is Ann Button Becker Park, which is also north of the Pike and is named in honor of the first woman councilwoman for the village. So she kind of paved the way for you all sitting here, myself. I'm not councilperson, but still, I'm an entrepreneur as well here in the village. And I think we need to be very, very careful about the steps that we're taking. I know that when I applaud all of the hard work that goes into grant writing and seeking out funds to improve the village, but we just need to be, take our time, really be thoughtful, make sure that the one hundred years that we've spent here is preparing us for the one hundred years going forward. And I'm concerned. I know that the survey went live today, which is great. Um, it's a little bit misleading because the survey, I don't know if you all know, there was a survey that isn't pertaining to the Dogwood Park renovation or rehabilitation. And it's, I want to say it's misleading, but you're given choices A or B, but you're not giving, given C, none of the above. And it's, it's a bit misleading if you have not attended any of the meetings or read any of the literature leading up to.
Not to interrupt, but isn't there a section on there where you can simply write in a comment?
You can write in comments, but it starts off with the two plaza choices.
Sure.
Choose A, or choose one or two, I believe it is. And you, there's not or, none of the above. And that's kind of misleading. And I really wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but.
You're doing fine. You're doing great.
I just, I'm just very concerned, and we have such a lovely village. And we just really need to be careful that we are not doing things or taking steps to do things to it that we're going to regret. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Saying off everything. Yes. If I'm just giving you correctly, your concern is that all of the parks need.
Same.
Need attention.
All the parks need attention.
And, and why is all this emphasis being put on this one park? Am I hearing that correctly?
Well, actually, the emphasis is being put on Dogwood Park and Dale Park. And the, the statuary.
Right.
Where we have other parks that are in dire need of help. And I'm concerned as to why we're, we're just choosing a few. They're the most visible, perhaps, or maybe two, and I know you guys have worked so hard on this. And I know that when you're applying for grant money, it can be very specific to what that project is going to bring forth to make it worthy of the grant dollars. But we're not that big of a village, and I think something that Mr. Sabo said, which I, I totally agree with, is that if we're doing these, this planning a big, you know, project with signage and overhang and all this, and then another project is just getting a slab of asphalt, or another park, excuse me, or another park, which is really, if you look at the, I don't know, the person per, per footprint, which would be the park in the old village, that's where we really need a great park. There are so many children over there that have nowhere to go, and they're playing in their front yards, and they're playing in the street, and it's very, very dangerous. And, and we're not, they hardly have any equipment over there. They have a, a garden that was intended to be used by the Waldorf School that has been totally mismanaged. I don't think that they even use it. I took some pictures the other day, and that is an accident waiting to happen. There's equipment, planting equipment that's overturned, there's fencing that's falling down, and that's on village property. And if something happens over there, we're all going to be liable for it. And I'm just asking us to slow down, take caution, be thoughtful.
One thing I would like to clarify for you, because I've been a part of the Marymont Preservation Foundation for a while, the Dale Park renovation or innovation, or whatever you want to be, with the statuary, that's been sort of a pet project of MPF for a while, because that statuary is deteriorating, because it's not covered. And their initiative has been separate from council, and that really has no council funds. That's private grant, and it would have to be funneled through the council financially, but it would not be the financial responsibility of council whatsoever. And that's sort of their pet project, that they wanted to gift the village as a centennial project to preserve that statuary. So I.
Okay. I was on MPF, and I was all in place.
Okay.
And I know that we went out to bid with several restoration companies to try to restore the.
Well, just for the cleaning part.
Exactly.
Yes.
My feeling on that is, is that the Colosseum in Rome and the Acropolis in Greece does not have a roof over it, and they're being allowed to age as they should. The, the canopy right now, that I drove by the statuary the other night, it was a beautiful night, and the trees and the blue sky, and just the beauty behind it, that would be totally changed. I mean, I know that this is not necessarily a council project. However, I do believe that the village owns the statuary. It's on village property, so that anything that takes place or happens to the statuary has to be approved by council.
Right.
And so we do have, well, you all have a play in that.
Sure.
And, and I read about, really what, that was intended to be, I know that, I think it's going to be renamed Mary, Mary Emory Centennial Gardens.
It's the proposed.
The proposed. And it actually was named, I have it in my notes here, it did have a specific name. And I know that what you're trying, what they're trying to replicate by the sidewalks going into the statuary is really the way it was planned to begin with, without the canopy. So, but still, I know that it's money coming, that they've applied for grants, but it still needs to be approved by all.
Just, just quickly, so that you know, it's not really as though Dogwood Park is, say, being singled out as the only park. It's just that Dogwood Park, of course, is the most prominent park. It's the most used park.
Right.
But other parks are being considered, like Hopkins Park down by the library is being considered. The Ann Button Becker Park, for an example, myself and Chuck Barlow, our administrator, we met with the people from Waldorf over there to address the issue of the garden. They, they are aware of it, and we had, and I believe Randy was actually there on part of that. It was me. Yeah, well. And they actually, I walked by there last night, they cleaned it up a little bit.
It must have been the past forty-eight. Cause I.
I'm ju, I'm just, I'm trying to say that essentially, we're not really ignoring all the other parks. It's, it's, yes, certain parks seem to be front and center on some of this stuff, but it's because they're sort of the premier parks right now, and it just would seem more logical that we would do some of those. Yeah.
No, I, I understand all of that.
Rob?
No, I, cause I, I think you bring up a good point about Ann Button Becker Park, and, and there's a group, the finance subcommittee is working on a five-year capital plan, and Randy's put in there a placeholder, that we should do something. But to your point, Jennifer, we need to talk to the residents, say, what, what's the right thing to do, and what's going to be the best beneficial? So, so it's on, I want you to know, it is on the list, and we have a placeholder for it, but we need to define what is it going to be.
Right.
And then, you know, but we, it's out there within the five-year horizon. Cause you're right, it is something that needs to be addressed.
Right. And I also think, too, and I, I know that you all will read all the comments from the survey, I mean, I've read them all up to six twenty-five. And some are very interesting, some of, you know, I was at the meeting last week, as you all know, but I think it's very interesting, some other people's perspectives, things that I didn't even think about, that they have concerns about or would like. So I think that there's a lot of really good information coming in through that survey, which I would hope, I have confidence in you all, that you will take to heart and read before we proceed with that plan. Because I know that there may be some grant money that is, needs to be finalized soon.
Sure.
But we don't want to, I just don't want us to make a mistake.
Nobody likes a mistake.
No, no. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry?
Mr. Donovan, please.
Good evening. I'm Terry Donovan.
Can, can I ask you to put that up? People, I, I found out when I was watching it from home, if, if you don't talk into it, people watching cannot hear what you're saying.
So what do you want me to do?
Put it up super right there.
Right in front of your mouth.
Sort of talk, sort of talk into it.
Pretend you're a rock star.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can't do that. Hello, I'm Terry Donovan. I live at sixty-six twenty-two Pleasant Street. I'm here tonight as a member of the pool commission, and the principal purpose is to thank you all, okay? Starting with Mayor Brown and all the council members for your support of the pool over time, and in particular in this last year. I want to also give special thanks within the council themselves to a council member who's no longer on council, and that's Leah Gelba, who did some great things for us, I'm going to talk about in just a second. But also Randy, who stepped in numerous times over, over the last few years to help when we needed council support or council leadership. And then now to also thank Matt Ayer for taking on responsibility for the pool and thereby the pool commission. So thank you for your past support and the effort that you've all done. We've also had great, a great year with, with lots of assistance from volunteers throughout the village, who have helped us, you know, everywhere from cleaning to landscaping to running events and supporting the, the pool staff. And it's been a great year. Twenty twenty-three was a very good year for the pool. Members enjoyed it for a variety of ways, through exercise, recreation, and socialization. Members participated in the daily use of the pool, as well as special events, social events, swim lessons, and swim team participation. So it's been a really great hub for the village and for, for families. I also want to thank, in particular, Mike Lockhart, who joined us this year as the new pool manager. Mike was hired, has hired and trained a wonderful staff that have dedicated themselves to a safe and fun environment for everyone and all the pool members. And I don't know, Mike's a pretty great guy. He's been a great guy for all of his years, and I think we should give acknowledgement to two people that helped make that happen. They happen to be here in the front row.
Absolutely.
Especially Mike's mother. Regarding the numbers, and I'm almost finished, but I want to just make you all aware that, you know, we've talked about, really, Rob, when, when you initiated, about, you know, helping us improve the economics of the pool for the village through the pool commission. This, this was a good year. This was the highest income year on record for the pool. So we brought in, you know, a dollar amount that I think you all will be pleased with in terms of the direction that it's headed. So we brought in, um, you know, a dollar amount that I think you all will be pleased with in terms of the direction that it's headed, and it was the largest amount. Uh, as a part of that, uh, it also concluded with the smallest deficit we've had in at least nine years. I only have nine years worth of records, and we've been running a fairly large deficit, and our goal has been to get it to, uh, a break-even proposition for the village, so the village isn't losing money. And we're within, um, close distance of that now, and, and have a good shot at getting break-even by next year, which frankly, I wouldn't have thought we could have just a few years ago, but we're making a lot of progress. We're looking forward to even a better year next year, because the great news is Mike has committed to come back. And he's got, got a good year under his belt, but he's got lots of ideas about next year and how to make, make the pool even better. So, um, with all that, unless you have any questions or comments, I just want to thank you all again for your support of the pool and the direction that we're headed, uh, because I think it's just going to keep getting better.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Quick question.
Sure.
Um, how much of an impact did, um, opening the membership to the wider community have with the, with the pool's numbers this year?
That's a great question. I just want to quickly acknowledge Rob, because he was probably, Rob and probably Randy pushed us hard on that. We would, we're trying to rebuild it on our own through just the village, but it turns out that's, I think, a pretty good idea. To answer your question, about ten percent of the pool membership this year came from outside, and that's outside the school district, uh, excuse me, the village, but within the school district. And that's around twenty-five families in, in memberships. It brought with it a good amount of money, which was, which was, uh, really much appreciated. For perspective, the membership for those who don't live in the village is about twenty percent more than the membership, uh, costs and fees for those who live in the village. So it's been nice, and that membership that came in was really kind of a last-minute effort on our part. We didn't get the publicity and, and the effort out that we perhaps could have. We now have a year to get ready for next year, so we can probably, uh, we, we definitely think we can do a lot better with that. And it'll, it'll be a big help, both for enjoying it within the community as well as the economic impact.
Yeah, I remember, I lived in Williams Meadow when my kids were little.
Yeah. Yeah.
Would have paid to, to, to be a member.
Yeah.
I'm glad to hear that's been successful.
It's been very good. We did talk to Mike and our own experience and other members about how they felt it was going. And, uh, it was just great, because it's part of the school district, and it was broadening friendships and, uh, making it a good experience for additional people.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Well, now you've got a year under your belt, so the word of mouth, you know, starts to pick up, which is a real good thing.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions or comments?
Uh, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
It was a great year, Michael was terrific, you guys were all terrific.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I just want to second his remarks, your remarks about Mike are, are just spot on.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't think the pool season this past season would have been anywhere near as good as it was without his efforts.
Yeah.
And, and the efforts of others too. I mean, there were, there were a lot of folks, but yours too.
Because she, she really took that on firsthand to get him on board.
Oh, yeah, thank you for, that's, that's principally why I wanted to acknowledge Leah, is, uh, that's, she did a lot of things, but that was a big thing that she did. She found him and brought him on, and, uh, it was, had a huge impact.
Yeah.
She was his biggest supporter by far.
Well, I don't know, his mom.
Well, I mean, recently, I mean, recently.
Kind of a Marymont thing, you know, it's like, we, we take care of our own and, you know, we invest in our own, and, and they invest in us in turn when they move on, so it's kind of really what we're about.
Yeah.
That, that makes me kind of happy.
So your kids are moving back?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership too in this.
Thank you.
I just don't really wish one yet.
Okay.
Sir? No? Oh, I thought you were trying to give me the motion. No? No one else? All right. Very good comments tonight, I must say. I really, I love it when people come in and give us the, the comments.
Terry, nice to put a face with a name, I haven't named before, so, thanks for all you've done with the pool.
Uh, all right, moving on then, uh, any question regarding the bills?
I have one question.
One question, yes.
We had another bill from Kleinger's.
Yes.
Do we know if, if, uh, Chris has submitted that to Hamilton County to get paid back? If you may just follow up with him.
I, I.
I know he did the first.
First one, yeah. I, honestly, I can't answer that, I'm not sure. I would imagine so, but.
Okay.
I don't know.
Do you, do you know the, the wonderful, um, guardrail fence at the top of Miami?
Yes.
Are we getting reimbursed for that since it was an insurance claim thing?
Yes, yes, we are getting, yes, that was kind of a weird, kind of an accident. Guy hit the thing, took off, but he left the car.
Wait, this was recently, again?
No, no, not recently, no, I mean, this is an older accident, it's just, you know, people don't understand when that guardrail and that type of thing are taken out. You know, the Village of Marymont does not, we don't stock guardrail, you know, we, you have to go to the company, it has to be ordered, and yes, it takes time. But it is fully repaired now, and, uh, yes, we have been reimbursed. Even though the guy on foot took off down the hill, but he left the car, so we were able to trace it. Well, that's the old don't turn contrives.
Maybe we should stock some, get a volume discount.
Yeah, get a volume discount, yeah, maybe. But no, Rob, that's a good question, but no, yes, it will be reimbursed.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions then, before we, I'll, I need a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Second, Mr. Air.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Ms. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
All right, let's pay the bills.
Hey, can I ask another quick question real quick?
Sure.
The, the tennis court stuff, so we've held back a portion, right? This isn't the full.
Ten percent.
Yes.
So, because they, they just move out.
Yes, like eighteen. I think it's like eighteen thousand that we've held back.
Perfect, great, thank you.
Uh, committee, I don't believe we have any committee reports tonight.
We do not.
We do not. There's an oddity. All right, and miscellaneous then? It's about to get good, uh, Terry.
Yeah, come on, it's mi, it's miscellaneous, Terry, come on.
It's beggars' night, you want to know what beggars' night? Beggers' night, uh, will be Tuesday, October the twenty-first.
Thirty-first.
Oh, did I say twenty-first? See, right away, yeah, okay.
That's radical.
Well, we can do, do two of them, no. October the thirty-first, yes. And, uh, I know everybody's going to be anxious about this one, leaf season begins October the twenty, I see, I was looking there. Begins October the twenty-third, and it ends the week of December the eighteenth, although there's always a little fudge at the end of that, depending on the fall. So get your candy and everything ready.
What was the end date?
The end date is, uh, December the eighteenth.
The week of.
Well, the week of, yeah, the week of.
I'd just like to write it again so I register.
Okay, yes, okay, we, we've got a lot of resolutions to get through here, so, you know, did y'all want to say for that, or?
So Brad's in a couple of these resolutions, would you like to speak up?
Well.
Come on, Brad.
You're the object of a couple.
Run, Brad.
See you guys.
Okay, see y'all.
Thank you. Yay, oh, oh, go bang, go.
Is Burrow starting? Do we know if he's playing?
No, we don't know.
He is?
This is the third reading to appoint Steve Pipkin as a member of the Parks Advisory Board for the calendar years two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four.
All right, that's the third reading, I need a motion and a second to accept.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mr. Air.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Uh, Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mrs. Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. York.
Aye.
All right.
Okay, this is the first reading to reappoint Brad Lockhart and Tina Geter as a member of the Architectural Review Board for the calendar years two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five.
All right, that's the first reading, we'll have the second reading next, uh, committee meeting, our next, uh, council.
Okay, this is the first reading to reappoint Brad Lockhart as a member of the Parks Advisory Board for the calendar year two thousand twenty-four.
That's the first reading, second reading, next council.
First reading to reappoint Brian Kelly as a member of the Pool Commission for the calendar years two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five.
All right, first reading, second reading, next council.
Okay, to reappoint Tom Gilmore as a member of the Pool Commission for the calendar years two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five.
Uh, first reading, second reading, next council.
This is the first reading to confirm the reappointment of Michael Lockhart as Swim Pool Manager for calendar years two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five.
First reading, second reading, next council.
Okay, this is first reading to reappoint Andrew Seeger, Steve Spooner, Mark Glassmire, John Fakes, and John Morgan as a member of the South Eighty Trails Gardens and Park Advisory Board for the calendar year of two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, first readings on all those, next, uh, second readings, next council.
Okay, this is the first reading to reappoint Barbara Whitaker as a voting member of the Tree Advisory Board for the calendar year two thousand twenty-four.
First reading, second reading, next council.
Okay, this is first reading to reappoint Marcy Lewis as a non-voting member of the Tree Advisory Board for the calendar years two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five.
All right, first reading, second reading, next council.
Okay, hold on, let me flip over, okay. Uh, this is the first reading, a resolution authorizing filing application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, and agreement to obligate funds to complete project through the federal land and water conservation fund program and to declare emergency.
All right, we've had the first reading, I need a motion and a second to suspend the rules and allow for the second and third reading.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Air.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis. Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
All right, may we, uh, have the second reading?
A resolution authorizing filing application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, and agreement to obligate funds to complete project through the federal land and water conservation fund prun, fund program and to declare emergency. That endoscopy's catching up with me.
You did very well, you got it. All right, that's the second, uh, reading, any discussion regarding this? Do we, are we all clear as to, Randy, do you want to make a comment?
It has to accompany that land and water conservation grant.
Okay.
The resolution does?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, may we have the third reading then?
A resolution authorizing filing application with Ohio Department of Natural Resources, and agreement to obligate funds to complete project through the federal land and water conservation fund program and to declare emergency.
All right, a, a motion and a second to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Air.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis. Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
All right, uh, motion and a second to evoke the emergency clause, please.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Air.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis. Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
All right, that will be adopted. The first reading on the ordinance.
To amend section fifty-one point one seven of the Marymont Code of Ordinances to increase fees collected for garbage and recues pickup.
All right, first reading, second reading, next council. All right, takes us to the task list, does anyone wish to make commentary or comments regarding the task list? I know you do.
So, I, yeah, I'm just, I was curious, um, we're coming up on the, the village website thing, October's when Eli said we needed to have a decision. How did, are, is, are you, because you and Chuck are down for the ones who are leading that.
Right.
Are you going to bring it straight to council? Do you, does it need to go through a committee? I don't know.
Well, I've been, um, actively, you know, seeking someone to basically fill that position.
Oh, no, no, we're two different things.
Website.
Website.
Oh, the website.
Not the IT.
I'm sorry, okay.
Because that was, that was the six-month lead time that Eli said, we need, if we choose to change, we need to have at least six months to be able to.
Yeah, it's a changeover, right.
And the contract ends with the website in April, right, next year. And so that was where we said, okay, well, that means by October of this year, we need to make the decision. And so you and, and Chuck are leading that.
Yes.
And so I'm just wondering, does it need to go through a committee, or can they bring it straight to council, Ed? I don't know.
I think they can bring it straight to council.
Okay, okay.
Or a recommendation, would you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, right, just recommendation, right.
Yeah, some kind of written report that says, here's what we think should be done and all that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we are, I'm, like I said, as I started to say, we are actively working on that, as I am also actively working on the IT replacement person.
Yep.
In fact, um, I had a person, uh, talk with Eli about that just yesterday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Should we put on the list, um, finding back fills for, and the tasks for John and for Kevin then, since they've announced their retirement?
It was already, wasn't it already put into Kelly's committee?
Yeah.
But she's, well, she's, that was, I thought that was just an organization, reorganization, right?
Well.
Are you, are you, so you're saying, and it, I'm just asking questions.
Well, Chuck and I have been talking about, yeah, because along with that, you know, I think more important, well, as importantly as the organization, is getting people.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, but you gotta, yeah, you gotta do the organization first, so you know how to put the role description.
So I'm, we're trying to work that.
So are you envisioning too, that Public Works would be the one who would do the posting and interviewing of the rules, just to clarify?
I'm premature to answer that, I want to talk to Chuck about that process, and he was out today, so we were going to meet today, but we unfortunately.
Because I really think, I think we really do need to post that pro, post those roles, you know, I can, I think it's incumbent upon us to just try and find the best thing, and we have some very unique skills that we're trying to backfill in that area too, and so I think it's really important.
I do think though, Rob, before you get ahead of yourself there, is that we need to define first, the role, are we going to have those roles going forward?
Totally agree, that's what I said earlier, Phil, I said, the first part is define the roles, then you can post them, but I just think we do need to make sure we post them.
Okay.
So.
It would be ideal to have a little overlap time with, uh, new people being able to work with John and Kevin too, so that just accelerates the schedule too. Be nice if there were at least a couple weeks at the end of December where they can download.
Coexist.
Have we asked them to put together a continuity plan? I mean, they've done it for twenty-five years, if anybody, and they care for the village, obviously, so if anybody can do that, it's those two.
Yeah.
I mean, a continuity, I, I will tell you, they're very valuable, um, because you've got all this intellectual property that's leaving.
Yeah, when that goes out the door, it'd be, yeah, unless they've got something written down, or depending on who.
I know John is working on putting something together.
He is.
I think they'd love to, because, you know, they've loyally served the village.
It's a really good thought.
Now, John's.
Do you have a template that you particularly like?
No, I usually let it, but they did them freestyle. Because it seems like every situation's a little different.
Yeah.
Yeah, good, that's a good idea.
Yeah, it really is.
So, then the other thing is, last time we also talked about, um, the fiscal officer role and stuff like that. And you'd said you talked to some of the consultants, right?
Uh, the traveling, um, clerks.
Clerks and stuff like that, and nobody was interested?
Well, I mean, some were, I mean, it wasn't a complete, uh, but I mean, um, you know, upon further exploration with them, I mean, for various reasons, they, yeah, didn't want to.
And I really appreciate all that Kelly's been doing, filling in for that kind of stuff. I do think, again, the sole concept, I think it's important to post roles that we, where we can, and just make sure that we're, you know, getting out there and getting information about what the candidates are, so. I just think it's something we should have as well.
So you're suggesting that I do some additional posting? So you're suggesting that I do some additional posting?
Well, there is, I, I reached out to Center for Local Government, and they have a spot where you can post roles, and, you know, it may not get.
No, I, in fact, I've, Jonah looked at it for me already, but I haven't posted there.
Okay, yeah, I mean.
I'm aware, I'm saying I'm aware of it.
Yeah, yeah, so that was the one that I reached out to and asked them about that, so.
Okay, all right.
Last, last question. Yeah. Marcy, you mentioned earlier about the, the grant stuff. Do you know, do you know, is ARB applying for that grant for the French art that, you know, that was?
MPF.
I'm sorry, MPF, yeah, MPF. Are they applying for that? Because it was talked about, I wasn't at the meeting, but I watched the video.